Call this meeting of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency for Monday, August 13th, to order. If you'll please call a roll.
Board Member Caesar.
President.
Board Member Anderson.
Here.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member McCoyd.
Here.
Board Member Osik is absent. Board Member Hoy.
Here.
Board Member Cook.
Here.
Board Member Lewis.
Here.
And Chair Bennett.
Here. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Counselor McCoyd, any additions or deletions?
No.
Okay. Have anyone signed up for public comment? Okay, I've no one signed up for public comment. Is there anyone who wanted to address the Urban Renewal Agency? Alrighty, and the consent calendar then.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Counselor Anderson seconded. Okay.
Okay, the consent calendar consists of the minutes of the July 23rd Urban Renewal Agency meeting and action item to authorize the use of $150,000 in committed North Gateway Urban Renewal Agency grant funds for Ochoa's queseria, purchase of approximately 1.3 acres at 3350 Portland Road Northeast.
Alrighty, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We have information reports, anything? Nothing to report? Nothing to report. Okay, well that concludes our meeting and we are adjourned. Call this meeting of the Salem City Council to order for August 13th. If you'd please call the roll.
Counselor Caesar.
President.
Counselor Anderson.
It's all.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor McCoyd.
Here.
Counselor Osik is absent. Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Here.
Counselor McCoyd, any additions or deletions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I approve, I move approval of the revisions to the agenda, additions.
Second.
And what we have is revised version two of the staff report dealing with the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant.
Alrighty. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Okay, any counselor comments? Counselor Caesar.
Thank you. We wrapped up the final meeting of the Downtown Homelessness Solutions Task Force a couple of weeks ago, and thank you to Counselors Osik and Lewis for helping to serve on the task force, and really very special thanks to Kristen Rutherford and Sri Rohren for their huge help doing research and outreach and answering questions and all of that for the task force. We have recommendations that we forwarded to the mayor, and hopefully the council will be seeing those soon. I'm really happy with how the task force behaved and discussed among themselves, it was a large task force, there were 17 or 18 people on it, and I think the recommendations we came up with are, they're specific, they're measurable, they're time-bound, they're all the things that we wanted, so I'm looking forward to seeing those come into council.
Very good, and thank you to you for, a very special thank you for your chairing that committee, you did a very good job. And from what I've seen of the report, it does have a lot of really interesting ideas, and we'll be bringing them to you as, as we can develop them into proposals that are action items or information items for you, so you can work your way through them. Alrighty. Do you have any comments?
No.
Okay, we'll move on then. I'm just looking, I have a proclamation, I'd ask you to let me bring this up later, the person receiving the proclamation is stuck in traffic right now, so we will await her arrival. And we have a presentation from operator of the Year Award from Joshua Clark, to Joshua Clark by the Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association.
Mayor, the representatives are right here. Do you want to, I think if they could do it up front.
That'd be great.
And join them, that would be terrific. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Craig Prosser, I'm the president of the West Central Section of the Pacific Northwest Clean Water Association. We're here tonight to recognize Josh for the hard work that he's done out at the city of Salem's Willow Lake Treatment Facility, and this is Matt Etzel, our Vice President and Secretary of Treasure, and I will turn that over to him for the presentation.
So I'd like to start by reading a little bit of, from Joshua's nomination. It says, Joshua is a member of Salem's Continuous Improvement Team and on the city's energy team. He has contributed many ideas to the CIT that has helped save time and money for the plant. Our area where he has really contributed has been optimizing of the centrifuge operation. He has volunteered his time with the operations and has worked with the biosolids supervisor to optimize the polymer dosage. He has worked through many different tests and ideas to try to minimize our polymer dosage. This, keeping about, while keeping the biosolids percentage in the current correct range. The project has reduced the polymer use from 63 pounds a wet ton to 35 pounds a wet ton, which equates to an annual savings of approximately $70,000. The nominee has contributed to the project that has increased the secondary treatment capacity from 45 million gallons to 65, 65 million gallons a day without spending millions of dollars of capital expenses. That's almost a 50% increase in capacity without spending any capital bars. Also written about Joshua is he's a very dedicated individual. During the 2016 Thanksgiving storm, their river road facility experienced a major breakdown. All the polymer lines were plugged, and Joshua came in and worked a 16-hour shift and helped the city from spilling more than 250 million gallons a day into the Willamette River. We just feel as a association that it's important that the council knows what great work Joshua is doing, and we just want to congratulate, congratulate Joshua Clark on his Operator of the Year Award.
All I really have to say is I just show up and do my job to the best of my ability and involve my team, my coworkers as best as I can, and we do the best together, so.
Great, we sure appreciate it very much, we really do. Congratulations. Well, it's great that we haven't been in public comment. Okay, we're now going to, excuse me, move on to public comment. I have three people signed up. Recall, you have three minutes, at two minutes the light turns orange, at three minutes it turns red, and we'd ask you to stop speaking at that point. Christine Darcy.
Good evening, I'm Chris Darcy, I live on Fairmount Hill, and I have the pleasure of chairing the Salem Public Art Commission. You have our annual report in your packet, but I wanted to just offer a few extra comments. First of all, a major thanks to our assigned staff person Courtney Knox-Bush, who's been fabulous. We have done some major collection management work, we digitized the entire collection, there is now an online inventory that can be searched. We oversaw an independent appraisal of the collection. The collection that we all own is valued at over $1.3 million, so some of the pieces are here in this, in this chamber. We have been very interested in, because of our mission about public art, getting work outside where the public can see it, interact with it, make our downtown more active. We accepted on behalf of the city a major gift of a sculpture by Mel Katz, noted Oregon sculptor, that was a gift from the Oregon Artist Series Foundation. And I'm very excited about an upcoming commission that will be placed in the Mill Race Park, that's a joint venture with the Oregon Environmental Council. The lead artist is Lilian Pitt, one of our state's most esteemed Native American artists working with a team of fabricators. It's going to be very exciting, Salem is one of, I think, four sites across the state, Cannon Beach, several sites in Portland. We are also very concerned with overall design with the city, several of our members have participated in planning for the Riverfront Park work and in the Salem streetscape planning. I want to just call attention to the last part of the report, which expresses some concern about two of the ceramic works that the city owns. One is the Salem Peace Mosaic, there's been a lot of call for saving that as part of the YMCA new development plans move forward. We had a very interesting with the why, they've got some good ideas, and we look forward to more conversations. And then the Echo Earth Globe, which I think has become an icon of, and part of the circulation of the Riverfront Park, is having some condition issues there, so we look forward to talking with you more about how to fix those in the future. I'd be happy to answer any questions or refer questions to Courtney, who's here.
Great, well we certainly appreciate all your work on this. I think we're all very interested in the future of the Peace Mosaic, and as well as what planning is going on around restoration and really preserve, long-term preservation of the Echo Earth, and look forward to how that will, how that will proceed. Will you be reporting that to us?
We certainly can.
I, I would just suggest, I think there's really substantial public interest in both of those pieces, they are, I think you are really correct that the Echo Earth especially is an icon, I think the Peace Mosaic has, has certainly started to move into that category as well. So I think if you, or Courtney, or both of you could come and kind of keep us apprised of how progress is being made toward, toward those projects, plus I, my impression is they'll have some budgetary impact, and we'll be seeing them presumably in the next budget cycle.
There are some significant budget issues related with both of those works.
Great.
And we would be delighted to keep you informed about those.
Good, we will look forward to that. The other, I think, just from my perspective, is having an understanding of sort of the sustainability of the art collection. These two projects, these two acquisitions and, and art objects are, are going to pose a fairly substantial price tag. And how, how art is selected and what the, what kind of, what the plan is, because I know your budget is not real large, and how we will continue to have that kind of preservation strategy in a sustainable manner over the next 20, 30, 40 years, I think would be helpful too. Yes, Counselor?
Thank you, Ms. Darcy, for coming down and for the work you do. I agree with the mayor on the Echo Globe and, and the Peace Mosaic. I also appreciate the Good Sense statue that's proposed and will, will be placed. I'm wondering if you could just talk a little bit, well I guess twofold thing, one is, you know, art is in the eye of the beholder, so, you know, one person's piece of art is somebody's not piece of art, and the importance of, of, I'm in favor of this, and I wonder if you could just talk a little bit about that, and then also this specific one, that how it relates to the bottle bill and recycling and all that, those items.
Well, let me respond first to something that the mayor said, and then I'll answer your question. We acknowledged at our last public meeting that the two pieces in question with these long-term maintenance issues were gifts to the city, and the city may wish to look carefully at the acceptance of gift works of art moving forward in the future.
Thank you.
And I think that that will be, that's, it's just, I think, now a very important issue.
Good advice as well, thank you.
With respect to Counselor Anderson, were you asking specifically for me to speak to the Good Sense?
The Good Sense one in terms of how it relates to the bottle bill and the other things, the, just the general, that not everybody's going to like every piece of art, but it's still important to have it, that's more general than the specific one.
Sure, that's easier to respond to. So, you know, many, for many years I worked in state government and oversaw the large public art program that the state has. Different buildings have different purposes, different buildings have different users, the public interacts with all of them. Most local governments, state governments, even the federal government makes use of citizen, public members to help determine what art might be appropriate for what kind of building. And you've adopted that kind of a process here, where you have citizens, some of whom are design professionals, curators, architects, and so on, who make recommendations for art acquisitions. And then the city has also received, accepted a number of gifts, some when the Civic Center was built, some from the Oregon Artist Series Foundation associated with the Convention Center, and then some through, through other means. The, the, we were presented, we, the Salem Public Art Commission, were, was presented with the, with an invitation to partner with the Oregon Environmental Council on a bill to commemorate the passage of landmark legislation affecting their work. They suggested that the bottle bill be cited, or the, a piece commemorating the bottle bill be cited here in Salem, because we're the capital city. And I liked that linking public policy to our, our state capital location. I love the fact that you can, we, we can have a work of art that actually will tell a story. So one of the things that we were very concerned about was citing this piece of sculpture in a place where people might be bicycling, people could see it driving by in a car, it's in a city park, we believe, we think art in parks is good for our community. And then we also wanted the piece to be provocative, so it will use, there's humor in it, there's fact in it, there are recycled elements that will be part of it. And when you think about kids coming to Salem on a school trip, spending time in and or around the Capitol, coming downtown, maybe staying at a hotel or going to a restaurant, you know, think of them walking through this park and discovering a 10-foot sculpture that asks them, well what do you think about this? What does this mean? And there, there's real fact behind it. So I don't know if that answers your question.
It does very well, thank you, it was an eloquent discussion, and I think it sums up what the value of art is, and especially what the value of public art is.
Well, we're, we're very excited, so I'm, I'm happy to present on behalf of the commission, our report tonight, and we look forward to some continued conversations with you.
Great, we'll look forward to it, too. Where's the, where is the Bottle Bill sculpture to be located again?
It will be, I call it Mill Race Park, but it is in the park that is north of the safe, the safe building.
Oh, okay.
So, and it will be on a knoll adjacent to the path that runs through that park.
Fantastic, very good. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Counselor Lewis?
Just curiosity, I don't know if it's because of the tradition, but is it going to be five cents or 10 cents?
You know, I didn't bring my notes, but I think she, I think the artist referred to five cents.
Because that was the history, yeah.
Yes, because that's where, that was, where it started.
Okay, thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Steve Anderson?
Good evening. Steve Anderson, along with Dwayne Hiltley, we are co-chairs for the Edgewater Partners, and would speak on Item 6D tonight, just to let you know what that has happened. First, I want to thank the mayor, you'll be seeing these little things around, but for coming to support the Edgewater Thursday Market with a coffee with the mayor at the end of August, so thank you, Mayor, for doing that.
Well, thank you, Steve, for the add.
But as far as the Edgewater Partners, as part of that, this partnership program that we'll hear more about from Jessica, is that five years ago, we thought we would get together as a community, and we wanted to do increased community connections, work on creating a safe and healthy environment, and do some neighborhood pride, some community building. So we went through the task of filling out the, the proposal, and we were successful, have been over the last five years. We've had the opportunity to have Jessica, who's been an outstanding city employee that has supported us tremendously, I would say thumbs up to her. This effort helps communities of volunteers do great work. Of that, we have what's called Neighborhood Walks that we do each month, and we go through the neighborhood, and we invite people to get together and see what's going on in the neighborhood and visit different places. Our September, our August walk, we're going to be working with some youth in the neighborhood to do a Pokemon kind of scavenger hunt on Edgewater and look at Pokemon Stots, so you're welcome to come out to that. In September, we decided that we are going to support the Open Streets Program and come across as a neighborhood and support that effort in our community, and reach across the river and be supportive. The other thing has been this Neighborhood Farmers Market, there came a need where we have a lot of people in the community that had need for healthy food, so we worked with a group of people, and we just said, we're going to make it happen. We have a Neighborhood Farmers Market now in West Salem, it's been very successful, we invite you down to it. But the idea is, is that you see about this community building process, this has been very successful, and I just want to say that the efforts of the city council and the neighborhood program to put a little bit of money and staff resources to help community people do this kind of work has been very successful. We have seen building with the Boys and Girls Club, a lot of partnership programs. Dwayne sits on the West Salem Neighborhood Associate, on the Urban Renewal Board, we develop relationships with the business district, it's very positive, and I just want to say we support it 100%, we've been very helpful for us, and invite you to come over to Edgewater, enjoy the market, come on a walk, and enjoy the neighborhood, it's a great place to be, and thank you to Jessica and your support.
Thank you. Jessica, stand up, we got to make sure everyone knows who Jessica is. Well, thank you, Steve, I think for all of us who are involved in seeing this begin, realizing what a success it's been, and knowing it'll continue for years to come, this whole, this whole program, we're very excited about it.
Just one final thing, we've decided this next year, we want to see if there's a community group that we can mentor with, too, to take what we have learned and share. So this has been a very good, positive experience of learning from Neighborhood Services and making a positive impact, and then we want to share with others, so thank you for your support.
Thank you. Okay, Patty Tipton.
My name is Patty Tipton, and I'm not here as a neighborhood chair association. I'm here on a personal promise that I made, and I wish to keep it. This is very hard for me to do. Dear Mayor, council members and staff, my name is Patty Tipton, I live at 3240 Hamill Street, Northeast Salem, Oregon 97301. I am here to make a personal request and keep a personal promise. On February 15th, around 3:00 PM, driving over Center Street on Bridge towards Hawthorne, Northeast, I just happened to look in my mirror and saw something I pray to God I never see again. I immediately pulled over, just at the bottom of the bridge, and got out. You see, I forgot my cellphone, and had no way to call 911. Several people did pull over and got out, and even looked over the bridge through the chain-length fencing. Then there were several who climbed down to I-5 to see what had happened. You see, a human being came walking up to the fence overlooking I-5, then in seconds they looked towards Lancaster Drive, towards Hawthorne Street, then looked below, took a deep breath, then like climb on the top of the bridge, and then like Spiderman, climb up to the fence and flew over I-5 traffic. I will never forget his face. There was no hope, and there was such sadness about it. His name is Salvador Rios Surtvez, he was 18, and from Mexico. Salvador hit a pickup truck, his body wrapped around the front wheel, he was dead. The owner of the truck was James, and he was 75 years old, and I am sure that he is, was going 60 miles an hour and could not stop in time. It happens that my contractor was driving in the next lane, and he saw Salvador fall and drove his truck into the wall to the right side. He stated he had damage on his truck and blood on his truck. He also stated that he would never forget it either. I could not get down the hill, but no one told me what had happened or any information, and I prayed and cried for his loss. A week later, I met his sister on the bridge and told her I was so sorry, and let her know that I put flowers for him. She stated that he was cremated and was flown down to Mexico with his mother that weekend. I also met others who knew the family, and I let them know that they were not alone. My request is that we add a curve like fencing in and have 1-800 numbers or 503 numbers printed on white metal attached to the fence on Center Street and Market Street. I asked around and was told that Salvador wasn't the only one. Portland has its problems regarding people falling to their deaths. I request you look to see how they tried to solve their issue. I don't know the cost, but surely to save one life from ending like this must be worth something. I pray that I am not the, not the only, sorry, only not see anything like this again, but that you consider doing something for the family of Salvador or any future families who could lose someone to the kind of death that Salvador did. I was told Salvador was number eight. How many lives does it take to do something to help solve this problem, maybe? Please, have somebody call Portland and find out how they solve their problem, and maybe you guys can do something, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Counselor, with your permission, I'm going to return to proclamations. Invite up, and invite up Jackie DeYoung, Chair of the Micronesian Islander Community Board of Directors. Okay, and Jackie is joined by, is this on?
Yeah.
Mike Barone, also a member of the Micronesian Islander Community Board of Directors. And the proclamation is, whereas on February 1st, 2011, the Micronesian Islander Community, otherwise known as MIC, became chartered in the state of Oregon, and whereas more than 500 local Micronesian Islander community members represent the Kofa Nations, Chuck, Kosray, Pompe and Yap, and the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands, Republic of Marshall Islands, Tonga, Samoan, and other islander nations, and whereas the Mayor's International Council benefits from my representatives and the And whereas the Mayor's International Council benefits from MIC representatives and the generosity and wisdom and time offered by its members. And whereas MIC members are actively involved with numerous projects in the Salem area to ensure the well-being of the community. And whereas recognizing the importance and celebrating members' heritage, MIC organizes an annual Micronesian Islander Community Celebration, which attracts people throughout the Northwest. Now therefore, I Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, do hereby proclaim August 13, 2018, as Micronesian Islander Community Day, and encourage the community to join me in this special tribute to recognize the contributions of the Micronesian Islander Community on this occasion, where their talents are showcased and celebrated dated this 13th day of August, 2018, Chuck Bennett, Mayor. And I will testify, this is an event to go to. It really is a wonderful event. Do you want to say something, Jackie?
Sure. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Councilors, for your time today. Yes, we usually hold an annual MIC celebration. We haven't scheduled one yet for this year. We're looking at actually hosting it probably in October, and the exact location is to be determined. Last few years, it's been in Salem, but we also have representatives from other cities as well, and so we're actually looking at a middle ground between Portland and Salem. So if you have anywhere along the line of I-5 that you would recommend, that's a really nice park that also has a nice amphitheater cover for all years. So thank you. And Mike also has a few words, too.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor, members of the Council. I'm just thankful for the recognition and be able to be here and appreciate the proclamation. Thank you.
Well, it's our pleasure and honor, and thank you very much. And we'll all think back as to where there is something along I-5, but we do have an amphitheater here in Salem.
Right, right.
We would allow you to use. Again, we'd love to have you there. Thank you, Jackie. Consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent calendar.
Second by Hoi.
Go through what is on the consent calendar. We have the minutes of the July 16th City Council, I think, Work Session, and the July 23rd Draft City Council Minutes. Under Resolutions, we have a resolution, we're going to adopt Resolution Number 2018-74, authorizing the approval of revenue bonds in one or more series to be issued by the Hospital Facility Authority of the City of Salem in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $40 million, and authorizing the City Manager to enter into an agreement with Capital Manor, Inc., indemnifying the city from all claims arising from the city's participation during the approval and use of the bonds. Under Action Items, we have an item that is adjusting some salaries in the Fire and Police Management Area. Under 3.3B, we've got ratification, we're going to ratify the Deputy City Manager's execution of the attached intergovernmental agreement with the City of Oregon Military Department Office of Emergency Management regarding the activation of the Emergency Management Assistance Compact for the 2018 California wildfires. We have a City of Salem Fire Department unit down there assisting. I think it's Mendocino Fire, right? Under 3C, we authorize the application for, and if awarded, execution of all documents, including the attached intergovernmental agreement with Marion County, associated with the U.S. Department of Justice, Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $75,866 for federal fiscal year 2018. That's the consent calendar.
Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. And we have a public hearing.
The City Council will now conduct a public hearing concerning proposed amendments to Salem Revised Code, Chapters 75, 78, 82, 205, 210, 300, and 601. The criteria applicable to the proposed amendment is SRC 300.1100. Testimony must be directed toward the identified criteria or other criteria the person believes to apply to the decision. The hearing will be conducted with the staff presentation first, followed by other interested persons. Neighborhood associations are limited to five minutes per association for testimony, and individuals testifying are limited to three minutes. A yellow light will appear at the podium when one minute remains, and a red light will appear when your time is expired. Please conclude your testimony when the red light appears.
Go ahead. How are you, Glenn?
Good evening, Mayor Bennett and Councilors. My name is Glenn Davis. I'm the Chief Development Engineer with Public Works Department, and this ordinance is a compilation of minor revisions to a number of code chapters related primarily to Public Works. So I'll describe quickly the nature of each code being amended and do it chapter by chapter. It'll go by fast, so be careful here. Chapter 75, we have modifications that reflect minor changes that have been required by state and federal law when it comes to our program. Chapter 78, we have changes that reflect current practice regarding replacement of existing sidewalks. Chapter 82, we clear up an ambiguity when it comes to permit exemptions. Chapter 205, these changes mostly clarify the property line adjustment process, and it adds details about the rights and responsibilities within platides easements. Chapter 210, it makes changes conforming to the use of the term director, which is the norm for the code. Chapter 300, it implements revisions that are, the property line adjustment revisions from 205 has parallels in 300. And then Chapter 601, these are requirements that were, that came out of a process of a community assistance visit, which are the, is kind of an audit from the federal government about our flooding program, so we had to make changes related to that audit. So that was it. So we provided a number of notices, as I have on the screen here. We did receive a couple of comments related to the Chapter 601 changes, and one citizen pointed out a couple of scrutiny areas. We'll incorporate those as needed if we move forward. And one brief clarification, this ordinance does not change any boundaries of any floodplain. It's just regulations that bring us into compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. So staff recommends that council forward this ordinance to second reading, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. We have one person signed up to testify, Marvin Sands.
Thank you. I have a sad story to tell about my property.
Tell us who you are first, Marvin.
I'm Marvin Sands. I live at 640 15th Street, Northeast. I'm a block east of North Salem's High School, about on the 50-yard line, one lot away from Mill Creek. Our flood policy now is $6,000 a year. It has a $5,000 deductible for an unfinished basement. There will never be a claim for flood on this property or any of the other properties in this floodplain. When we had our flood, I think it was '96, the sewer and the storm drains were connected, and almost everybody's basement had flooding, and it came up through the sewer if you had a sewer line and drained your basement. So the city spent, I think they got a lot of federal money, and they divided the sewer and divided the storm system. About six or eight years later, we had another flood. Mill Creek was right hitting the grade of the bridge. Nobody had flooding in their basement because you separated the storm drain and the sewer. Okay, that, when they instituted this flood insurance, I think we started at $900 a year, and it has gone up and gone up. Now it's $6,000, for my property, it's $6,000. It's crazy. So we need help from the city. I don't know what you guys can do, how you stop something like this, but this, you know, we have people that are losing their, you know, you're forced to have the insurance. If you want a mortgage on your property, you have to have the insurance. It's crazy. I'm looking at refinancing another property at 5.5% to give up a $3.625 money to get out from under this $500 a month flood insurance. Anyway, we need help. We need help. Who can you ask for? Thank you. Hey, and I appreciate what you guys are doing. I know you're making a lot of money doing this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody have a question about this tragic story? Thanks.
Okay, any questions for Glenn? Yes?
Thank you, just to, I thought because of all the activities we're making, that flood insurance rates were actually going down. Is that correct?
Yes and no. Shall I explain?
Yes, please.
The flood insurance rates are set by the federal government, and those flood insurance rates are mostly going up. So the federal government's rates are going up. However, in Salem, we have a program that's called the Community Rating System that we, through our flooding management program, have a discount of 25%, below that rate that the rest of the community pays, rest of the nation pays. So, yes, so ours are reduced because of our flooding program, 25% off that normal number. But, yeah, statewide, nationwide, they are going up.
Okay. And then just a second question, whether or not anyone responded to Ms. Borup on the Gilmore Field property.
Yeah, I did. I emailed her this afternoon.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Counsel Anderson.
Counsel Nanki must have been reading my mind because he asked the question I was going to ask, and I've also spoken to Director Fernandez, and so I know that we've responded to Ms. Borup, and that's good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Go ahead.
Glenn, you know, I, being an old lobbyist, I skimmed through here to see what the underlying changes were, but when we got the easements created on plats, it's like pages added to the thing. Was this not, is this new stuff? Or, you know, you said everything was an adjustment, but it's like four or five pages of language here that's underlined that looks like it's new, and I went, "Well, that's, it's not like you just missed something and added something in," or what?
Okay, Ms. Anderson.
I worked with the City Surveyor in Public Works on that. There is a lot of new text, but basically, it's currently when someone puts an easement on a plat and it gets recorded, all it says is access easement or utility easement. There's no, nothing in the document, nothing in the plat that says what rights or obligations are included in that. So through common law and through a lot of litigation, jurisdictions, over years, they determine what it is, and this just basically reiterates what the common law is.
Yeah, well, they got it now. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Counsel Kaiser.
Thanks. Just remind me, this is separate from the update of the national flood maps, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that will be coming to us later, as far as the committee that was formed, the subcommittee to look at updating those maps, FEMA, the FEMA maps.
Yes, yeah, this has nothing to do directly with that.
That's what I thought, but wanted to verify this.
Anyone else? All righty. Close public hearing. Counsel McCoy.
I move staff recommendation.
Second by Hoi. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Okay, we have no special orders of business, information reports. Anyone have any questions, comments? It's very informative. That's good. Anything? Yes, sir.
I was hoping we could hear a little bit more about the Neighborhood Partnership Program from staff. They could just highlight some of the...
Yeah. Jessica, you want to share Neighborhood Partner information? Now, this is the fifth year of Edgewater. Is that correct? Did I understand?
It is, yes. Hi, my name is Jessica Price. I'm the city's Neighborhood Partnership Coordinator. Good evening, Mayor. I'm a representative of the council. So the partnership program, people I think are mostly familiar with the Neighborhood Associations, and there's 18 groups that are all volunteer-run that get city support. In addition to that, the city collaborates with two areas at a time on neighborhood strengthening types of things. And back in 2011, we switched this, instead of ongoing support in two of the areas that were really requiring the most disproportionate amount of city resources, to a rotating model so that a group would be guaranteed two years of direct support, and then at the end of the two years, they could choose to reapply, or it could be deemed that another area had the greatest need combined with the ready and willing partners that wanted to work on a project, something to address those needs over a two-year period with the city. So Edgewater is halfway into their third two-year term, to answer that question.
Is no one else applying?
So the applications are actually out right now. The general schedule is they come out the beginning of August. It will be open through November, and then sometime around Thanksgiving, there'll be a selection committee that will score all the applications received for 2019, 20, and whoever ranks the highest based on the combination of the need, the ready and committed partners, and also what their goals for the two-year period would be. So Edgewater is the only group that would be ineligible to apply this year because they're partway through a term right now. So any other group within Salem, it could be a Neighborhood Association, it could be a group of them, it could be a section of a neighborhood, if they have ideas on ways to make their neighborhoods even more livable, enjoyable places, they can get those ideas down on paper, gather some partners, and propose that right now.
Okay, great. Thank you. Counsel Hoi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've really appreciated your work, Jessica, out at NOLA with the Capes Group.
Thank you.
And I was just curious where they're at in their cycle.
Sure, yeah.
And also just maybe specifically mention the tiny libraries that have been amazing for our neighborhood. I really appreciate that.
I would love to. So Capes, Community and Partners of East Salem, is the East Salem Partnership Group, and they're actually coming to the end of their fourth two-year term. However, every two years, it's been a new kind of angle on what they've been doing. So it started just in the Swigel area, and they were really looking for more free activities for kids. A lot of younger people didn't have access to some of the things happening downtown, programs at the library, things like that. So that was kind of the first two-year focus. The next two years, the group wanted to kind of replicate what was happening in North and South, where rather than just focus on one neighborhood association area, they wanted to look at all of the neighborhoods in a high school feeder area. So that's when the Capes Group came about, and they were open to supporting East Lancaster, which is where it started. North Lancaster quickly got on board because of the Brown Road. It was an undeveloped park that the neighbors wanted to see turned into a community garden until there was money for a master plan and maybe some development. And then in their third two-year term, the group really wanted to look at little free libraries. Those are those cabinet-sized libraries that can go anywhere where you can take a book, leave a book. And so in the McKay area, there was not a single library in the entire feeder district, and so they saw that as a way to create micro-community shared space, support families and literacy, and so there are seven, I believe, now. And then in their fourth term, the group wanted to look at incorporating some of the Heale City activities, and so we've been doing some work around bike rodeos. There were some soccer after-school programs that were happening. They've also incorporated a healthy living tip or activity into all of their monthly meetings, and then information tables at different community events and things like that.
Thank you. Yes, Counsel Anderson.
Thank you. Stay there, Jessica, because I have a couple of comments, too. First one is, thank you very much for these detailed reports. I have to say, they're fascinating, reading them, every, all the facts that you have assembled and how that relates. And I want to specifically point out on the one for Northeast Salem, Pages 14 and 15, which are some of the demographics. And when you look at, this is from the Salem Kaiser School, when you look at the schools there, the majority in every one of those schools are Hispanic and Latino, and I say "good," and I say "this is our future," and I say "this kind of planning is very helpful, and we need to bring these folks into our city government and processes as much as we can." And we talked about that a lot, and this is where our population is growing, and they've got much to offer, and we should incorporate them into the city. Then I also see there's, to me, there's some kind of good news for the school district. If you look at the next page on 15, students able to speak English well. And this is not to say that they should not be speaking Spanish, but it's helpful to help us interact with them as much as we can, that they can also speak English. And I see that the school district is doing a good job... And I see that the school district is doing a good job, because if you look at the percentage of students that are able to speak English versus, in these neighborhoods, versus everybody, it's going up and going up, and McKay High School now, you know, 89% of the students in McKay High School can speak English well versus 95% in the whole city. So I can see that when you look at the percentage of kids who are in the small, in the grade schools, middle schools, Salem Kaiser School District is doing a good job, and that's, and I know they will continue, and that will enable us to incorporate these citizens and people into the full scope of community activities. So thank you for your work.
Yes, Counselor Hoi.
One more. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you tell us a little bit about what's happening on September 28th at 5 o'clock at Swigle Elementary?
I absolutely could.
I have a feeling there's something.
So, I mentioned that the East Salem group started in the Swigle neighborhood, and so the very first large-scale event that we did was the East Salem Day of Play. And so the idea was to celebrate that part of town, to bring in barbecue and information, activities, entertainment, and so I'm happy to report that we're currently planning our eighth annual East Salem Day of Play. It will be on the 28th from 5 to 7 at the Swigle Boys and Girls Club.
Very good. Counselor McCoy.
So, sort of going back to the mayor's question, and I'll rephrase it. How many, do you get a lot of applications for these every year? Because we were hearing that Edgewater's in their third two-year group, and the East Salem group's in their fourth two-year group, therefore, well...
No, they just have been ongoing.
Well, okay, so how much, is there unlimited money, or is there enough for how many people to...
Yeah. Well, there's currently not a time limit for how many times a group could apply, and it is ranked based on all the applications that would come in in a given year, and these two groups happen to keep scoring high when their year comes up. I would say that we average two to three applications, full applications per year, but a number of other conversations where folks will ask me to come out and talk about what we've done, and maybe some of the ideas that they have, and sometimes they find that they don't have all of the pieces in place to do a full application that year. And then sometimes a group, through the process of filling out this application and gathering their different letters of partner support, and talking with the partnership teams that might already be in place in their area, they're making connections so that those things are happening without that direct city support, but by way of other community supports that are already out there that they're learning about through the application.
Thanks.
But, yeah, current city funding is for two per year, but they're on a staggered two-year cycle, so every year, there's an opportunity for someone new.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing for you, Jessica, thanks. I just want to comment a bit on something that happened in my ward, which is 6J, which is the hearings officer's approval of conditional use for a nonprofit youth shelter serving up to 10 individuals age 11 to 18. I think that's a terrific thing, and as we've discussed, and I know Counselor McCoy was involved in this earlier, you know, there's a great need in our community for housing homeless youth who are on their own, as opposed to, well, there's a great need for homeless youth with their family, but this is specific. And I have to say that I commend Cessna for their approval of this. That's a neighborhood group in my ward, and I was present at the meeting when they discussed this, and I supported it. They made some suggestions and some ways to look at this that are entirely appropriate for the neighborhood, but the neighborhood group was in support of this, and I congratulate them for not taking a NIMBY attitude, and I really appreciated that, and that's helpful for, not only for this neighborhood group, but for the whole city.
Thank you very much. In fact, I was just looking to see if I see it on my schedule. I don't write off, but they're actually having an, sort of an opening of Taylor House, I think it's called, and, yeah.
Well, if you find out when it is, Mr. Mayor.
I'll let you know.
Yes, thank you.
We'll go together. Very good. Anything else? Okay. We'll move on, then, to ordinance's first reading.
Ordinance Bill Number 1718 and ordinance vacating Aviation Loop Southeast.
Counselor.
Yes, I move that the council conduct the first reading of Ordinance Bill Number 17-18, which vacates Aviation Loop Southeast, and advance Ordinance Bill Number 17-18 to second reading for enactment.
Second. Second by Hoi. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Ordinance Bill Number 1918 and ordinance declaring certain territory located at 3641 Boone Road Southeast, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District.
I'll take the short form and move staff recommendation.
Excellent. Second by Hoi. All those in favor, do you want to talk about that at all? Do you have any real thoughts you want to share here?
No, we've had similar issues in that area in the past, and annexing because of a health hazard for water and septic is always top priority.
But that's a common problem out there, this health hazard?
There's been a couple over my term out in that area.
Okay. Well, good, we better hurry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
Ordinance Bill Number 1818 and ordinance declaring certain territory located at 2487 Robbins Lane Southeast, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District.
Counselor McCoy.
I move staff recommendation.
Second by Anderson.
No comment.
You want to, no comment on that one? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We'll go to second readings.
Ordinance Bill Number 1618 and ordinance relating to public art, amending SRC 15.010, .030, .040, and .060, and creating new provisions. Counselor McCoyd.
Aye.
Counselor Osick is absent. Counselor Hoi.
Aye.
Counselor Cook.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Kaiser.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Nanki.
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Motion passes. Ordnance passes.
And next one is ordinance Bill Number 1218 and ordinance relating to penalties for smoking and for offenses in parks, amending SRC 45.990 and 94.990. Counselor Osick is absent. Counselor Hoi.
Aye.
Counselor Cook.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Kaiser.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Nanki.
Aye.
Counselor McCoyd.
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, ordinance passes.
And the next one, we're going to need a motion to engross the ordinance, and then I'll read the second reading of that.
All righty, Counselor Kaiser, Anderson, one of you.
I move to engross ordinance bill number 4-18 and conduct second reading of the ordinance bill for enactment.
I second.
Okay, second by Anderson.
And they vote on...
Do I vote?
Oh, go ahead, okay. Okay. Engrossed ordinance bill number 418 and ordinance amending the Salem Area Comprehensive Plan Map, the Northeast Salem, the Northeast to Neighbors, Southeast Salem Neighborhood Plan Map, and the Salem Zoning Map for certain properties generally located on State Street between 12th Street and 25th Street, amending the Salem Revised Code, Chapters 110.025, 220.005, 702.005, 703.070, 806.010, 806.015, and 900, and creating SRC Chapters 533 and 534.
All righty.
Counselor Hoi.
Aye.
Counselor Cook.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Kaiser.
Aye.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Nanki.
I hesitate and hopeful, aye.
Okay. Counselor McCoyd.
Aye.
Counselor Osick is absent, and Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, I have no further public comment. Anyone want to address council? Okay, we are adjourned.